...side agencies about the budget and the first one that's up on the agenda there would be the public library. Please come forward.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. How y'all doing this afternoon?
Okay.
Y'all doing good? Awesome, awesome, awesome. Glad to be here. Thank you for just a minute. As I slide into the seats. Page nineteen.
You're welcome to start whenever.
All right. Awesome. Hi. My name is Arnessa Dahl. I'm the exec director here at Kent County Public Library System. Commissioner Price, Commissioner Nickerson, thank you for having me. This is my first time meeting you guys, so I would like to give you a little brief, slightly brief bio on me. I have been in libraries for the last two decades. I am at a point now, I've ran four other different library systems, and I am happy to be here. I've been here for two and a half years. And in my time here, we have continued to grow Kent County Public Library and their systems and having more and more people sign up for library cards and using our services. And so presently, we have over 10,000 people registered for the library cards with 80% of them being active, so, which means that nearly half of the county has library cards or has some vested interest in the library. Based on the census, last census, the total households in Kent County is 8,130, and given the numbers that we have here, statistically, every household or resident is a library card holder. Over the last two years, we spent down our unrestricted fund balance. I know that was a point of contention when I got here. And so to give the Kent County residents more, now the money has kind of been exhausted at this point. And so we're kind of at a critical point where we just need more money to do more for the citizens of Kent County. But how do we do this? I know that's what you're asking. We do this through PBS, not the public broadcasting station, but through programs, books, and services. And in order to facilitate those programs, books, and services, we need staffing. Obviously, that is a big point of contention all across the eastern shore, but we have been able to retain staff, but we also now need to pay them and also need to get more staff in order to do the more things that we need to do in the county. We allocate, I know you guys allocate money for different things. The money that you invest in the library makes the Kent County a place to live, work, and play. The library offers programs for children, teenagers, adults of all ages, including expectant mothers. So pretty much, we service everyone in the county from zero to however, to retirement age in that aspect. And I want to say that's all I have for you guys today. I think the biggest thing is that, again, we are looking to get more money, to have staffing, to do programming. We're also looking to do some, we're still looking at Rock Hall. That's something else that's on our, I guess, palette or plate at this particular time. Do you guys have any questions? I guess, I said a lot and I wrote a lot, like, two and a half pages worth of justification, so I wanted to kind of keep it short.
Arnessa, maybe describe the capital, because I'm not sure how much the commissioners know about what your intention is.
Okay. So, the capital budget in general, what we're looking to do, one of the things we want to do was build a ramp for Chester Town. We heard that that last week was cut out of the budget at that particular time, but we're also looking to do something in Rock Hall. Our lease is up October 1st. We're looking to find a place, as a matter of fact, before this meeting, me, the president of the trustees, went out to look at places out in Rock Hall. We're looking at the Civic Center with new, I guess, political management of Rock Hall is coming up. They are agreeable that we could have an MOU in order to make that relationship work a little bit better. And so that is also part of some of the capital ask. The Maryland State Library Capital Fund is due on May 19th, and so that is another avenue that is, but that will not be dropped until FY 2025. And so that's just something that we're looking to do. Also, we're looking to replace all our computers. They are at the end of their lifespan. I think the last update we had was about five years ago, and so as you guys know, technology rolls over pretty quickly, so that's another $28,000 just for those. Also, we're looking to update our security systems. We had a couple of security issues over the last couple, about six months or so, and so we're looking to update our security cameras and also our inspections for our security and making sure everything works for fires and things of that nature.
So obviously, you were listening last week when we talked about the capital project for the ramp out front.
Yes.
You understand why we...
Yes, no, I understand. I think what, kind of what I was thinking, and, you know, we want to make sure that because High Street is such a walkable area, we want to make sure people are able to walk up into the building from High Street in order to obviously promote the businesses and all that stuff. And so, and because people walk across there, if there is someone that doesn't, you know, has a wheelchair or has a walker, you know, Kent County is aging, and so we wanted to make sure we're kind of being proactive in that.
But you also already have two ramps already.
No, we only have, we have one on cover, one in the back, and then we have a floor level by, by the kitchen. So if there's a fire, you know, they would have to, there's one right by the kitchen. Those will be the two current exits for the public. So, yeah. But we do, again, I do understand. Makes sense?
Very good.
All right. Any other questions, gentlemen? Are you sure? My whole 15 minutes isn't up yet.
Is it, uh...
All right.
Can we ask about more time?
Yeah, absolutely.
I don't know if you have a section for that.
Nope. This is your opportunity to ask for an answer.
So what role would the two new part-time employees positions play?
So, one would be at the branches. You guys presented our branch manager of 45 years. She is retiring, so we're looking to have another branch manager, another branch manager, which is a full-time position, and a part-time position at Rock Hall, and then also to facilitate North County. We did do some reallocations inside of our, inside of the library, so some people got promoted, so that also left some, some new openings up in that aspect. One of the other things is our kind of like CFO or FCCO, whatever the financial person is, he needs, he needs some help, so we're looking to have someone to really help him because he does maintenance, he does our finances, he does our HR, so he does like three or four different jobs, and then he's also my executive assistant. So, we're looking to get him some help and also so we can spread out the workload in that respect. So those were really what the part-time people are going to do, and so that is a part-time position. The branches are part-time, except for the full-time, obviously, manager. And then, like I said, we had some openings, and so we promoted some people in order to keep people in-house. That way, we didn't have to retrain them, and then we gave them, you know, obviously, a bump in their pay based on the workload that they'll be doing now.
Thank you.
What about the fund balance request?
Meaning?
Is there a fund balance?
So that's the difference between the fund balance that they used last year and they're not able to use this year.
Oh, okay. So that's a favor from you?
Yeah, same for me. So that's the amount that would shift from fund balance resources that they were able to use last year, they're asking the county to pick up because they have funds to help.
Right. We are almost completely exhausted. We do have, we had, all of us, all the non-restricted fund balance, I'll put it like that. So yes, but that has been also dwindled down. We started at 485,000 or something like that when I started, and we've dwindled that down to, I think, 25,000 or so at this particular point. Like I said, because we had some openings, we do have a little bit more than anticipated, but 25,000 versus the $182,000 I've asked for, it's, it's not going to do much. So, yeah.
Well, as you know, this is our, this is our first visit, and as we go through this, there may be questions, more questions as we go through, but if no one else has any, thank you very much.
And thank you. And please feel free to call me. Thank you, gentlemen.
Bye-bye.
Bye. It was nice to meet you both.
You too.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Mr. Webb, Kent County Health Department. Dr. Spencer, good to see you again.
Oh, thank you.
Haven't been a while.
Your documents are on page ten.
Good afternoon, commissioners. For, for the record, my name is Bill Webb. I am the health officer for the Kent County Health Department, and I'd like to introduce Ms. Emily McCoy, who's our fiscal administrator, and Dr. Leland Spencer, who is our medical deputy. And I want to thank them for being here and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
For the sake of being brief as it relates to our budget, the Kent County Health Department is not, is requesting for, requesting the required match from the county based off of the core funding that we have received from the state for FY '24. We recognize that the, that the core, the core appropriation from the Maryland Department of Health has substantially increased over last year, and, you know, part of, part of what we didn't report last year is in the middle of the year, we received a partial funding allocation for about $700,000 related to general operations and salary adjustments. And, and that was not included, you know, we didn't ask for a match for that, that, you know, that was, you know, that was, you know, that was part of, you know, a governor's initiative to, you know, provide additional funding for public health, and they have continued that on in FY '24 and will all, in all likelihood, do that again in FY '25. So, knowing that the county, you have made a dedicated effort to keep tax funding flat for this year, recognize that this increase represents a substantial hardship on the county. And other than, you know, the required match that we're asking for, we're willing to, you know, make some concessions for, cover some of the expenses that the county typically covers. You know, the Health Department is willing to pay for the cost of rent for our facility, and we're also willing to cover the cost of mosquito control for next year, you know. And the way we would do that is we would, we would ask the county to invoice us for those services, and then, then we would pay, you know, pay that, pay that back to the county.
Very good.
So, this is, you know, it's a, it's a substantial increase for you, and, you know, it is, you know, we're trying to, you know, make this not as difficult as, if we can. And, and that's, that's, that's really, if you have specific questions about our budget submission, I'm, you know...
I don't think we've, as I pointed out, at what the library people, we, really the first time I've, we're digging into it now, and I appreciate you being here to, to talk about it, but as we go through it further and come up with some questions, you may, certainly will probably be hearing from us.
Okay.
Yeah. Dr. Spencer, I, I want to just say it's been, it's been nice to see you again, and...
Thank you.
You were, you were a visitor on a regular basis some years ago, but I hope you're doing well, and it's, you certainly look as though you are. It's certainly nice to have you back today.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Commissioner.
Thank you. Anything else you want to go over with us that jumps out at you that you'd like to talk about, or just give us a chance to read through your...
So, so we're, you know, one of the things that, that, you know, that we, one of our important partnerships with, one of our most important partnerships with, with county agencies is the Board of Ed and Dr. Couch, and, you know, the school board president are here. We're looking at a significant change in the staffing pattern for, for our school health program, and, you know, you know, a model has been proposed where we have, you know, a registered nurse in every school and then one additional certified nursing assistant for, you know, to provide substitute or coverage for those four individuals on top of, on top of the, the, the school health coordinator. What we would like to, you know, ask is if there is a way to, and what we have done is, I'm concerned specifically about, about, you know, coverage for callouts. And what we have done with, with Dr. Couch is, is we have proposed to pay for an additional CNA position in that program from Kent County Core, you know, Core Funding and other grant sources, and we're also, would, would like to sort of expand that to include two additional CNAs. Where, you know, we would like to request a model where we have a nurse in every school, we have a certified nursing assistant, so that's a second set of healthcare hands in the school health room in our high-volume schools. So that would be Garnett and the Middle School, and we would have one additional CNA that would float. And that would represent an increase in about $69,000 over, this is with, you know, the agreement that we have with the school. And as Dr. Couch will certainly be happy to, you know, provide input, that, you know, they're facing, they're facing a very significant financial shortfall, and, you know, we're willing to work with the schools because we have, not, because they're important partners, and this is where we establish, you know, healthcare literacy and healthcare services, and it is, you know, we want to, you know, provide ideal, you know, we want good services for our students, good healthcare services. And, you know, my concern at this point with the proposed staffing model is we may have school health rooms that are closed if we have folks who call out unexpectedly. And, and so that is, you know, that is the, really the one issue that I wanted to discuss today.
So the new proposal, which I tend to agree with, is to put an RN in every school? The problem lies is that you don't have enough staff to cover if someone were to call out sick or, or has to take emergency leave or something. Do you know what the numbers, you said it's around 69,000?
For, for, for the additional two CNA positions that we're seeking.
So if you were able to get one of those positions, is that going to be a help?
Yes, very much so.
Is that going to assure that, in your opinion, obviously, things could happen, no one has it crossed the ball, but would that provide, obviously, it's going to provide for better coverage, but would that alleviate the possibility of some health room being closed?
Yes.
And to address the summer school issue?
Yes.
And you think one would be enough to do that?
We will work with, yes. I mean, I think that, that we're willing to compromise with, with one, one additional. You know, we can make it work with the proposed, you know, the proposed plan. The issue is that what I don't want to see happen is see the school health rooms close unnecessarily. So, so if we don't have staffing to cover those, those school health rooms, that it, it generates a significant hardship on school administration and on teachers that, that have, that have kids that are reporting health issues or they need medications. And, you know, we really need to, you know, make sure that those resources are available for the kids. And, and, you know, one additional staff member would be, would be, I would be very appreciative of that.
Just for an educational purpose, because I'm somewhat familiar with the nursing field and, and some of what they can and can't do. I'm also familiar with the CNAs and what they can do and what, what they can't do. But I'm not sure that my colleagues here understand. I understand there's a difference, obviously, but if you don't mind just sharing briefly what a CNA can do versus an RN as far as medications and everything else, that might be helpful to...
Okay, certainly. So...
To understand the importance of, Dr. Spencer.
Right. So, CNAs work under the authority of a nurse. A nurse has to literally delegate certain responsibilities to the CNA, and then the CNA literally works off of that nurse's license. So the CNAs are specially trained in specific act duty, specific duties that the nurse feels comfortable delegating to them. So that can range from just putting on bandages to giving medications. The, the CNAs can give medications. They can't give injections, though. And so if you have a child in a school that needs a medication that has to be given with a needle, they can't, they can't do that. You'd have to have a nurse for that particular student. But pretty much everything else, I believe the CNA can do, again, depending on their training and the level of confidence the nurse delegates to that, to that CNA. So in that environment, there's really, I would say, very little. In fact, I say 20 years ago, but it's, wow, now it's more, it's longer than that. But when I first came, Commissioner, the model was totally different than a nurse in every school. We had CNAs in every school, and we had two nurses that would float amongst those CNAs to train them and delegate, and those CNAs had a lot of, a lot of authority in the individual schools. And over the years, we've, I think we've all evolved to the point now where we all want a nurse in every school, and I think that's the expectation of the public as well. You know, there are no standards. There are no nationwide or state standards on how you staff a, a school health room. It's really based on the needs of the students and how your local health professionals, you know, best assess the need for that, for that school. So, literally, we have some schools, for example, like Rock Hall, where you have minimal need for major interventions or even moderate interventions, where a nurse there or a CNA there could probably, could probably work. But then we have other schools where you, you could almost use two nurses because of the volume and the acuity of the children involved. So it just, it's just school by school what, what determines the need. But I think right now, the goal is to have a nurse at every school. I think that's everyone's expectation. And like, like Bill said, our concern is just having appropriate backup when that nurse calls out sick or has to take a personal leave. And I think if we have the, this year, the Health Department can cover the cost of an additional CNA. So if you gentlemen would consider a second CNA, I think we would all feel more than comfortable that that would be enough, that those health rooms could remain open throughout the entire school year.
I guess this might be a question for Mrs. McCoy. Can you give us a dollar amount of what you're thinking about as far as benefits and salary for a CNA?
Yes, Commissioner, and I did bring handouts for each of you to see with the salary data. This is a three-CNA model.
This is another area where I don't think that, I'm uncomfortable, you know, even considering putting the price tag on a child's wellbeing and not being able to provide a service to our students, our children. I don't think that this is something that we could not, not necessarily agree with, so...
And the CNAs are typically contractual employees, so they are typically slated to work between 100 and 185 days a year, so they are a much less expensive support mechanism than a married registered nurse would be.
Yeah, so about $31,000, I think, is what we're talking.
And so to be clear, this would be on top of the $557,000 increase in the funding?
I think it would be an allocation to the school.
Either way. Correct.
Not an increase to what we're requesting.
Currently, the contract is between the two of you, correct?
Yes.
I have one question. So the allocation from the county is slated basically to double, and that's based on the state's allocation and our required match. Is there a plan for that extra money other than the two items that you've offered to pay for, on behalf of the county, or what happens with that extra funding?
So, what we're, the, the majority of that funding is going towards salary increases for our nurses and for other allied health professionals. We have a number of, of salary adjustments that are happening. There's also a 2% cost of living for all employees. We're also looking at using some of that funding to, you know, to augment our, our core program. So that would be administration, that would be IT, that would be human resources, that would be, you know, fiscal administration, you know, keeping in mind that, that, you know, the state allocation and the county allocation comes out, you know, to about, you know, $3 million, and our, you know, overall operating expenses for the year are approximately $13.6 million. So we have, you know, we have a lot of grant programs, we have a lot of fee-for-service programs where we're generating revenue, and it requires, you know, some support capacity from the core Health Department, and we're, we're looking to, you know, beef that up, and also, you know, we're, you know, we're dealing with, you know, environmental health. Environmental health is a significant issue at this point. We're hopeful that, that we can get a salary adjustment there so that we can hire some folks. Environmental health, we are in a very precarious situation with two licensed staff members, and it is really being driven by the salary levels that are set by the state. And that is not unique to Kent County. There are, there are other counties that have, you know, significant shortfalls with, you know, their ability to provide services to the community. That would be well and septic, that would be restaurant, restaurant inspections, and, you know, so that, you know, at this point, you know, we're looking to just, you know, and also, we're, part of the plan is to, you know, cover the rent of the building, you know, to provide, you know, you know, to provide support for the school system. But that's, you know, I think that's, that's, that's the bulk of it.
That is the bulk of it, but there, we would like to work as a team with the county that there will be likely, because of the renewed investment in public health by the state, that huge influx will be difficult to absorb both influxes, and we would be happy to work with the commissioners and Mrs. Heller and Pat on potentially, you know, other items that could be offset that are considered core functions for the county.
And this is because I simply don't know. Do you carry a fund balance? What happens to the extra money at the end of the year? How does that work with the state?
So when we reconcile with the state, we do a, a whole reconciliation with the DAFER-7410 that we turn in for core funding. What they do is a settlement for an FPCA, which is what the core money sits in. At that time, they determine whether or not we owe them money or they owe us money. In the years where we get money back, we redeposit it into the core PCA so that it sits in there. But any revenues we receive, we're already turning into the state. So we, while we do have a bank account, the second revenue comes in, we turn it over to the state immediately. So sometimes it does credit into future years. Our programs are all very good this year, and we're very proud of that, that all of our programs are operating at a, at a good level, and so there will be funding, I believe, in addition to the items we've offered.
So is the CNA, this new position, be funded out of that, out of that core funding?
So, yes, Pat, that's the plan, is that the, so the first CNA that we're going to fund, I'm going to put them in a core nursing PCA, and that second could go in. We just are concerned on the future that that model remain active. I just don't know, the state goes up and down so frequently on what they're willing to provide and not provide.
How many employees do you have?
We have, we have approximately 142 employees. We have, we have approximately 142 employees.
Well, the model that, that is being presented with the RNs in every school and a lot of the other counties, they certainly have a, a bank. I just used the word bank for, for lack of better words, of substitutions and staffing to cover when they're, they do solve, you know, you know, faults. And I saw Dr. Couch and Mr. Webb talking about, well, if in fact this was approved, whose, whose budget should it be in? And I saw both of you saying, it shouldn't be me, it should be. So I'm kind of wondering if, in fact, it is approved for an additional CNA, who's gonna take it on in their budget?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe right now, literally, there's a contract somewhere that's signed by the school system and the Health Department, and then the money is transferred to pay for the services, correct? So this, this would increase that amount, correct? I mean, it would still be, it would be part of that contract, right?
So just for clarification, just rewind a little bit. When I first came, we had the two, we had the two RNs who also served as the coordinator, and then we had all CNAs. So over time, we have added more registered nurses. They're a higher-priced tab, but we have added registered nurses, and the coordinator no longer services a school. She's like outside on top of. When, when I first came, the coordinator was assigned to the high school and worked the high school. That was her station, that's what she worked, and she was the coordinator. So over time, we've tried to improve the services. What we're recommending is that we have an RN in every school, keep the coordinator not assigned to a school, so the coordinator could essentially fill in in the school if they needed to. And then we offered to pay for one additional CNA. So it would be five RNs, one coordinator, and another CNA. So there would actually be eight individuals that we would employ with the school system in our contract. Our contract with the Health Department has increased significantly over time because of improving the services that we offer to our students. I have checked with other counties. Our neighboring county, for instance, in Queen Anne, they only have RNs assigned to their schools. Somerset only has RN assigned to their schools, plus they have a coordinator. We are a smaller school system, we have smaller schools. And so what the Health Department has agreed to do is add another CNA, so that would be nine people that would be assigned to the Health, to the Health Department. And what, what Mr. Webb is proposing now would be a third one, which would be 10. So I just wanted to clarify that.
And then whatever, whatever ultimately the model is, 9, 10, 15, it would go into this contract. And, correct? I mean, you're not, you're not asking for the county to pay for something outside of the contract, is what I'm trying to establish.
Well, the way I perceive that, the current agreement with the one additional DCA that we'll pay for is that that particular employee will be housed. While they're all Health Department employees, we will not bill for that employee. We invoice to show that ours worked and actual revenue spent on a monthly basis. So that particular employee we would remove from the invoicing process, and we would absorb the full cost of them. So if we did that with the second CNA and core services, then I would do the same for that. I am also hoping that we get, excuse me, another grant to, excuse me, to support mental health services in the school system. We are currently supplementing three mental health professionals on a quarter, they work 10 hours a week in our schools that we are funding to support. So, but we would not bill if they got housed with us.
So you've confused me.
I'm sorry.
So it just, extra CNA position is funded. Would that, are you saying that it would go with the Health Department budget?
Right, it would be outside of this, it would be outside of the current contract, right. It would be outside of the current contract with the school.
Because also.
I don't disagree with having the RNs, and I think that's a great idea. I think it's long overdue, no doubt. But I am concerned, and I've had this conversation with Mr. Webb, I am concerned about there being some shortfalls. And if there's shortfalls, that puts people at risk, and especially our children. But, and I don't wanna see that happen.
Yeah, well, I think right now, it's, you know, we, we, and we've met with Dr. Couch and talked about this. I think we all agree the present model is, is workable, okay? Based on history, based on where we are. No one feels any child is at safety or health is at risk. I guess we're just trying to, trying to be a little proactive and thinking, okay, well, what could go wrong? And when you think what could go wrong, that's where we were just concerned about, well, if you know, if this could possibly, how do we solve that? And the way we could take away just about all of the risk is to have additional, you know, full-time CNAs in the.
Much better to be proactive than reactive.
Right, right. But right now, we're, we're, we feel the present model is, is workable. It's, it's good, we just feel like it could be maybe tweaked to be a little better. That's all.
Very good. Well, thank you. You have any more questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much for coming in. Pat, why don't you come sit up here with us? 'Cause I, when I, I want you to be part of this group, and I want. At this time of the year, you're a very important part, so.
Right here.
It's your job to keep Albert straight down there.
She's gonna make me look so much better and smarter right now.
I don't know, it might go the other way.
Um, I think we have.
Kent Soil Conservation.
Good afternoon.
How are you doing today? Good to see you all.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Shall I?
They're on page 63.
How are you? Good?
Good to see you.
Good to be seen.
Good afternoon again. I'm Robert Baldwin, the District Manager with Kent Soil and Water Conservation District. And with me, I have Charlie Miller, our Chair, who's a volunteer. And I also have Frank Barnes with us, who's also on our board, he's a volunteer. So real quickly, I wanna, instead of grinding through the numbers like we have in the past, because we have two new Commissioners this year, I wanna explain a little bit about who we are and what we do, as well as talk about the budget. So Kent Soil and Water Conservation District is one of almost 3,000 soil conservation districts in the United States. Virtually every county in the United States has one, except the desert southwest, where the US government owns all the land. You know, we were established in 1938 as a partnership between the federal government to the state of Maryland and any state and county government. We were established as the first district in the state of Maryland and the first district in the 13 Northeast states. So we, we are one of the original soil conservation districts in the United States. And technically, we're organized under state law. We are considered a political subdivision of the state, although we're an independent entity that we form a partnership with the federal government, the United States Department of Agriculture, Natural Resources Conservation Service, NRCS, the state of Maryland, Maryland Department of Agriculture, and Kent County, the Commissioners. And you have been our partners since our inception. Our budget request this year, let me go on backup. And that, we, we basically use the budget request that we submit to the county as our leverage towards grants and other monies we receive from the feds and the state, totaling about $54 million. I'm sorry, 5.4 million, I missed my decimal point. So it leverages about $27 for every dollar that the county puts in to the, to the mix. Our request this year is for $213,533.50. I'm sorry about the rounding error, Pat, I know spreadsheets do that, which is about 6.2%. It's, it's about $12,600. Not a lot of money. Last year, as you know, the county budgets for the affiliated agencies were held level. So we came back to you and asked for some fee increases to make up some of that. We also let go a contractual employee that was doing some contract work for us. And then we received some additional one-time money from Maryland Department of Agriculture to kind of make up that deficit. So this year, we're in a position not to having to ask for quite so much. So when you spread it across those two years, it's about 3.1% per annum. A fairly modest request. I've included in your, in your packet, there's, there's two sheets or two handouts. One's a white sheet, it's called Chesapeake Bay TMDL Fact Sheet. Total Maximum Daily Load is really what drives our lives. It's what people like us lay awake at night and think about. This is a, the equivalent of a consent decree that was issued by the United States Environmental Protection Agency back in 2010. It's really a 15-year plan to clean up the Chesapeake Bay. And the reliant share of this work in the state of Maryland has been delegated back to the agriculture industry, the agricultural sector. It affects large landowners, farmers. And the soil conservation districts are the one that are charged with implementing most of this work through our state, federal, and local partners. I'm not gonna read this, this is just something for your benefit. It's the smallest, shortest, most concise explanation of a TMDL I could find anywhere. Usually, they're very thick books with a lot of legal terms in it. But this will help you separate some of the wheat and the chaff away from it to understand what it is we're all being held accountable for. And I say all of us, because we're all partners, we all live in the county, and the county ultimately has numbers assigned to it that we have to have nutrient sediment reductions assigned to. Which leads me to our second document, this little green book. This is basically Maryland Department of Agriculture, one of our primary partners. Their, for lack of better terms, it's their score sheet. We have to report numbers to the feds, to the state, to a lot of different people on the progress we make. So when you, when we tell you your money's being wisely spent, we can actually back that claim up with numbers that are published and, and the veracity of those numbers are good because they're validated by the state and the federal government. One of the things that we're really proud of is, like, if you go to, you can see on page four and page five, there's just some general funding summaries about how much money is put into this from the state. But if you go to page seven and you look at Kent County down there, number, it's about two-thirds down the page, we're actually number two county in terms of our implementation of cost-share practices on farms and landowners for things like waterways, diversions, drop structures, helping people implement cover crop, things of that nature. And, you know, we're the smallest county in the state. I don't need to tell you folks that, but it's worth, it's worth remembering that the smallest county in the state does the lion's share of the work, particularly in, when it comes to agriculture. If you go to page nine, it breaks all those practices out specifically as to what we do and how, how it plays out. And then the counties are listed across the top. Go to page 10, this is the cover crop program. This is when farmers are out planting in the fall, making sure they have wheat, barley, rye, or some other cover crop on that bare ground through the winter. We're number two in the whole state of Maryland in terms of implementing. And we use county dollars to support our administrative staff to implement that program. I mean, it's one thing to have willing partners with all the farmers, and we have the best farmers in the state. I'll say that in Queen Anne's County, and I'll say that in Garrett County, because the numbers, the numbers don't lie, as they say. We, we have excellent commitment from our farmers, and it takes staff in the office to work with those people to get this money spent, implemented, and get that work on the ground. And you can, when you ride around Kent County in January and February and March, you see green, you don't see brown. We, we do an incredible job in this county. And on page 11, you'll also see their Conservation Reserve Enhancement Program. We also score really, really well in that. So just a little bit about the numbers. All this is driven by the TMDL, Total Maximum Daily Load, established by EPA. We have a 15, it's a 15-year program. A lot of people liken it to a marathon. I say it's a 15-year sprint, because no sooner we get through one year, we start right back into the next year, and we have to exceed the following year's numbers. Kent County is on the hook to do a, a large portion of the agricultural-assigned load reduction for nutrients, nitrogen, phosphorus, as well as sediment. And we're gonna meet those goals in Kent County. Unfortunately, some counties won't meet them, but we will do. We, and we use your dollars to do that. But we're more than just agriculture. We're in the public schools every year, teaching environmental education, ag education. We support, and we provide leadership to the Envirathon program. This is the national high school environmental program for high school students. They compete, both state competition at a national level and an international level. We review erosion and sediment control plans for developing lands and redeveloping lands in the county. We assist landowners with prescribed burning for wildlife management and other practices that they burn for. And we also offer a scholarship to Kent County high school students who plan to attend college studying either agriculture or natural resources. And we fund this using donations and grants that we achieve from other sources. We do not use county dollars, state dollars, whatever. This, this is money that we actually solicit for. Finally, I do wanna thank you for the support, we all do. We understand that you've got tough choices to make, and we appreciate all the support. We also appreciate the support of having us, let us have access to the county IT department. They're real handy when we need them. We don't call on them often, but there's some fine people in there. And I don't know if any of them are in the room, but they, they get it done, they really are. I wanna thank Commissioner Nickerson for being at our recent Cooperator's Dinner. That was, that was a really good one. We had a record crowd this year, about 185 people. I'm gonna get Commissioner Price there, I know Commissioner Fithian's been in the past. It was a good time had by all. We got to recognize our Cooperator of the Year, Richard Winters, and his wife and his family. Again, one of these people who's not only recognized statewide, but nationallyw- nationwide as a leader in soil conservation. He's been featured in quite a few online videos sponsored by Natural Resources Conservation Service, as well as the Soil Health Challenge, which is another organization out of the Midwest. And finally, you know, I wanna offer you folks the opportunity to come visit with us. You can come visit us at the office, we can have a sit-down for 15 or 20 minutes. We'd love to take you out in the field for half a day. We could start with lunch, have a discussion, go visit some sites, or go visit some sites, come back, have lunch, and discuss what you saw. I think, I think it would be a really great opportunity to, you know, see your constituents in action and see what we do with your money and how we, how we leverage it out there on the field. So I'm gonna stop there, I'm gonna say, Charlie, you have anything you wanna add to that? For Barney?
Well, we appreciate your support in the past. And talking about conservation, I was out working today, and they're putting waterways in our farms today so we can make, so we don't have erosion in the fields there. And we at the Conservation Office, we love, love the land, and we wanna take care of it. So we need your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the job you do.
Barney says he's good. Any questions?
No, we just, we've, so we've all, I consider that we've always had a very good working relationship, and we're gonna do our best to keep that moving forward.
We appreciate you, thank you.
Thank you, Robert, for taking on this new, new position. We appreciate your help. And I've heard nothing but positive things. I'm a short-termer though, you know?
Well, maybe, maybe not. Maybe not.
When your first presenter came, I said, man, to be young and pretty and have a lot of energy, I mean, I just, I miss those days.
Robert, Robert has a lot of energy still.
But as John knows, he and I went to school from grade one to 12 together. We're the same age. We're getting there, aren't we, buddy? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Couch? And members of the board?
Ms. Stewart. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
President Fithian, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you this evening. I thought I would begin by just sharing our strategic plan. You have, the presentation is inside the strategic plan, but it's a, the plan is from 2020 to 2025. And so this, we went through a, a long exercise in terms of developing our strategic goals. And so this, we went through a long exercise in terms of developing our strategic goals. And from there, we came up with some specific goals and overarching strategies, our core values, all of those. I thought you might be interested. I'm not going to go through that, but I thought that would be nice to share with you this afternoon. What I would basically like to begin is by sharing our vision statement and our mission statement, that all of our Kent County public school students will graduate equipped to achieve their highest potential. And that is what we strive to do in Kent County public schools. We are an anchor organization that creates an environment of academic excellence through a collaborative, equitable, and rigorous learning community. Our strategic goals, as listed in the folder that I shared with you, is support early learning to provide a strong foundation for academic excellence and success. That's in line with Kerwin and our blueprint, so that all fits in very well. And goal two is equitable access to rigorous culturally-relevant curriculum and instruction aligned to the Maryland College and Career Readiness, or the CCR standards. Goal number three is to provide an array of professional learning opportunities. Again, it's interesting that we set all of these goals ahead of time, and they, all six of these goals align perfectly with the blueprint. Goal number five is to, excuse me, let me turn the picture. Goal number four, excuse me, is to create a safe, inclusive culture that meets the social and emotional needs of our students. Goal five is to ensure our families and community partners will be informed, engaged, and supported. And goal number six is providing state-of-the-art learning spaces and tools that are equitable and inclusive. I thought I would just briefly share a bit of the blueprint requirements, because this is what drives what we have to put into our budget. There are five pillars in the blueprint. The first pillar is the Early Childhood Education pillar. And these four bullet points are what we are required to do with the blueprint. We're required to expand publicly-funded full-day pre-K programs. We've already met that goal. We've had full-day pre-K for a number of years. I think this is our ninth year of having that in place. So we've met that goal, but obviously, we have things that we would like to do to beef up and improve what we have offered to our families. We do offer it at no expense to our community. In the blueprint, there are certain areas in which you can charge for pre-K, but we offer full-day free pre-K to all of the parents that live in our community. Increase the number of high-quality early childhood education providers and educators. What we're required to do with the blueprint is to identify programs within Kent County that we can partner with and offer them the opportunity to bring up their educators and providers at a much higher level. In other words, they have to meet the Excel certification. So we are working with a provider here in Kent County right now, and we're providing the in-service and the education that they need in order to get their daycare certified as an Excel's program. And we would partner with them. We're also working with them so that they can build up and have all of their employees to the same quality as our pre-K programs are in Kent County. We also have to expand the supports for young children and their families. And by doing that, again, we work with our providers here in town to, there's only one that meets the qualifications for the blueprint, but we're working with them to provide additional in-service so that they can also meet the needs of their families and the young children that are in their programs. That would also require us to expand our three-year-old programs. We're not there yet. We don't necessarily have the room in all of our elementary schools at this time, but we are moving forward with not only getting all of our schools up to the Excel's program and certification, but also our ability to expand our three-year-old program. The only three-year-old program we have right now is in Rock Hall, and that services our students with high needs, our students with disability. So at some point, we have to be able to offer a full-day three-year-old program for all of the students that live within our county. So that is a goal that we have, an overarching goal, but we're not ready to begin implementing that in this coming year, FY '24. We also have to improve our kindergarten student readiness, which means that we have to ensure that all of our students are taking the kindergarten readiness assessment. We have been testing all of our students, not doing a census testing, which means you just randomly pick which kids are tested. We've been testing all of our pre-K students for the last five years. And so now, it's a requirement that all school systems have to test all of their students using the KRA, which is the kindergarten readiness assessment. Pillar number two is high-quality and diverse teachers and leaders. The first requirement is that we have to improve educator compensation. We have a requirement by the blueprint that we have to provide a mandatory 10% increase by this coming year, the FY '24. So we provided our, we looked at what we needed to do in order to get there, and so we provided a substantial salary increase for our teachers last year, and then we have to complete that recommendation for FY '24 in order to meet this requirement. And then by 2026, we have to improve all beginning teacher salaries up to $60,000. So once we get to the 10%, our next challenge will be is to get all of our teachers up to the $60,000 increase in their salaries, so that their beginning salary will be at $60,000. We have to improve, we have to increase our rigor of educator license and preparation programs. And in that pillar, what we are doing is, we are actually working with Chesapeake College, and we're working with Bowie University in providing opportunities for our growing year own. So we're identifying some of our own employees that are working within the Kent County public schools, and through a grant that we receive from Maryland, which is our Maryland Leads Grant, we're actually paying for their coursework so that they can become certified teachers. And that is through a grant that we have with Maryland. So we have to not only increase the rigor, but look at our preparation programs to find out how we can improve the offerings to our employees. We are also partnering with institutions so that we can pay some of our interns that are in our schools, so that they don't take a hit in terms of having to do their internship and then lose salary, so that they would actually be paid for that semester or that two semesters, because at some point, internships will have to be a full-year internship, instead of right now, they're just a semester. So we would work to help improve their salaries so that they can quit their job and then complete their internship and do their student teaching, essentially is what that is about. We're also working with Chesapeake College so that we can create opportunities for our teachers to obtain their masters. And we're working through Bowie. We're also working through other universities, but what can we do to get our teachers, not only to get their bachelor's degree, but also get their masters, so that we can offer dual-credit opportunities for our students on campus? Right now, in order for our students to take dual-credit courses, they have to travel either to Washington College or Chesapeake College. If we have teachers on our staff that have their masters in the content area, they have their masters in math, then they can actually teach the dual-credit course at the high school, and the students wouldn't have to travel to go anywhere. They would just be taking the dual-credit course by a teacher on campus. We have to provide new opportunities to create a more diverse educator workforce. What we found out over the years is if we can identify some of our minority teachers and staff and provide them with opportunities to get their teaching degree, then we can create a more diverse workforce. We've also learned that creating our own job fairs locally, we actually recruit more teachers by doing our own job fairs. So we're doing more of those. As a matter of fact, we have one scheduled for this Saturday and have quite a few individuals that have signed up, and they're ready to be interviewed at our job fair on Saturday at the high school. We are required to establish a career ladder to improve professional practice and student performance, and that is through the National Board Certified Teacher Program. So we have to provide opportunities for our teachers to get their National Board certification and then implement comprehensive in-service training and professional development. Pillar three is a very extensive pillar. I cut it down to four bullet points for you, so I'll quickly go over that. It's our career and college readiness. We have to ensure that all students have equitable opportunities to meet the CCR standards that have been established by MSDE and reading and math. And then we have to provide intervention services to keep our students on track to achieving CCR. So we have developed intervention courses at the high school that some of our students that have not reached CCR will be taking and being on track to achieving CCR, college and career readiness. We also implement, will be implementing next year, a CCR pathway. It's the best way to describe it, it's like an individual educational plan for our students, and we'll check the box when they've achieved CCR in certain areas, but if they haven't, then we can document what interventions we put them in and make sure that we're pushing them through with the right interventions to make sure that they are CCRs, they meet the CCR standard. And career counseling, we're required to expand career counseling and CTE offerings. Next year, we'll have another pathway for our students at the high school. It will be computer science. We're adding that pathway for our students as well. Pillar four is more resources to ensure all students are successful, and so we have to improve the education of students receiving English learner services. So we are, we've got a work group together, and we're expanding those opportunities for our ELL students. We're also looking at ways to meet the needs of our students with disabilities. And then the third bullet is provide supports for students who attend schools with high concentrations of poverty. We have two schools in our school system that qualify for concentration of poverty, and they are Rock Hall Elementary and Garnett Elementary. And those two schools get an increase of funding, and it funds two things. It funds the RN, the Registered Nurse at that school, and then also a community liaison or facilitator that helps to drive programs that engage our community. And then enhance student health services by identifying ways in which we can improve the behavioral supports for our students in our schools. So we have a social worker just about every school. We don't have one at every school, but we have four of our five schools, we have social workers. Pillar number five is governance and accountability. We have to create a blueprint implementation plan, which we submitted on March the 15th. That was our first plan that we submitted. It was over 160 pages. Every school system had to submit their initial implementation plan, which was a very heavy lift for a school district our size, but we met the deadline. And we did receive initial feedback that we met all the initial requirements of the plan, and on Friday, we got our first feedback from the implementation review team, and so we'll be in the process of making revisions. But MSDE and the Accountability Implementation Board are confident that everybody will have their revisions in, and then we'll be ready to start the plan beginning September when our students return. Deploy expert review teams to monitor progress in schools. That's from MSDE and from the AIB. Monitor the implementation progress, which would be through the Blueprint Implementation Coordinator, and then monitor fiscal allocations. Requirement of the blueprint is 75% of our funding has to be out in the schools. So we have to demonstrate that we meet that condition. When we received our allocation for next year, there were a couple of things that were concerning to us, and the first of which was the amount that we would receive from the state and also, and the requirements that we have in terms of meeting the requirements that are set forth in the blueprint. You'll note that the estimated county revenue with restricted funds is about $720,000. That's an increase from year, from '23 and '24. As you'll recall, the increase for this current year that we're in from the county was $15 from the previous year. So the increase for the blueprint would be about $720,000. You also will note that we would see a decrease from the state, and that's in Foundation. You'll see that the decrease from the state is $391,000, and the Foundation allocation is what is awarded to school systems to pay for the increase in their salaries, for the increase for our salaries, increased salaries for our employees, excuse me. You'll see there's a little bit of an increase in concentration of poverty. Next year, Rock Hall Elementary will receive an additional allocation due to the high level of poverty that they have in their school. And then you'll see some increase in transitional supplemental instruction. So overall, you'll see the bottom-line increase for the '24 forecast. So when we saw the numbers that were coming in from the state and local, we knew that we were going to have to take steps to reduce our budget right off the bat. So we looked at where we were at with FY '23 and what we could do in reducing our starting allocation for '24. So you'll look at the next page in our, in page 11 in my presentation. We reduced special education by $200,000, and then we also reduced our fixed charges, which is our FICA, our, how much we allocate for insurance, you know, just the general supplemental salary portions. So we reduced our budget by $700,000 just to start our beginning budget by, to $30,080,914. The factors that impact our budget for next year are obviously 7% inflation increase. We are required to implement the Maryland's Future Mandates, and I'll talk a little bit about those. But we also had some requests from our departments, much like you do, and have to whittle that down to see what we really had to add into our budget, and of course, our health insurance increased by just under 4%. The detailed '24 budget expenditures that we had to account for, $75,000 increase in our retirement, about $190,000 for health insurance, $28,000 for retiree health, and then we have to hire a career counselor as mandated by the blueprint. So that's another $106,000 that we, and it's interesting how that money transfers hands. We have to transfer it to the Workforce Investment Board, and then they give it right back to us, but they keep 5% of it for their overhead. So we have to send them 106, and we get all but 5% of it back to pay for the career counselor. So the total we had to add in addition to our budget was $470,233. The next page are the budget enhancements that we determined that we had to fund moving forward, and you'll see that all of those are recurring costs except for one, which is replacement of our Fine Arts Showcase panels. But I thought it was important to note that the total requests that came into us from our departments and from our schools totaled about $1.5 million. And we whittled that down, the board and I, whittled that down to $112,000, almost $113,000. And most of those are direct supports for our schools and in our instructional program. There is one request to increase the athletic budget, to replace uniforms. We have a special-needs bus that will be going out of service next year, and then we want to replace two maintenance vans using the enterprise lease. And then we want to replace two maintenance vans using the enterprise lease. So, if you look at page 15, the total revenues that we will be getting next year is $29,633,064. We reduced our budget by $700,000 just to sustain what we have. So, we reduced it to $30,080,914. We add in all of the increases that I talked about, the retirement increase, the health insurance increase, the retiree health, the career counselor, the late bus, which we added this year, and the budget enhancements, which is the $112,000. That would mean we would have to reduce our budget by another million dollars, almost We looked at our budget to see what we could reduce and what we could cut in addition to the $700,000 out of our budget. And we proposed to reduce five and a half teachers, five instructional assistants, one custodian. We looked at the model of our health services to see what, if there were some savings that we could enhance there as well, which we've talked about in a prior presentation. Transportation efficiencies, we'll be looking to see if we can't consolidate some routes. We know that we'll have some savings through retirements. And then we're reducing the discovery education. That amount that we felt we could save is about $900,000, which would make the total reduction from the Board of Ed's perspective, we would reduce our budget by $1.6 million for FY '24. So, with what we need to fund the salary enhancements that we're required to do through the blueprint, you'll go down to slide 17. We are, we have a shortfall of, well, we have a salary enhancement placeholder of $1.5 million that we need in order to sustain and provide our employees with their salary enhancements. We have completed negotiations with our teacher union, our unit, and their average increase will be about 6.5% increase going into next year. But obviously, we have to have the money to fund that. And we're still under negotiations with our support and with our administrators.
Is that a step or a COLA or a combination?
It's a combination. It's total. It's about 6.5. And so, what do we need for, to make our budget for FY '24? We need a total of 1,681,000, well, 1,681,610. And then the final page is just our capital request for '24. We need about $450,000 to complete the roof at KCHS. And moving forward with the Kent County Middle School project for the design, it's about $3,315,000. Okay, I'll stand for questions.
Well, let me just say, I used to think that I knew how this all worked when you have your, what you, we'd come in with what your minimum, you know, with the bottom line, with the, because when it went, years ago, it used to be whatever we could afford to give. And some years, it was a lot, and some years, when we had lean years, it was less. And then we went to the maintenance of effort system where it was based on your population and thing. What drives it now? Is there a, I guess, when we used to use the maintenance of effort formula, it was by law, if you divide the number of kids into the amount of money, and if it increased, you had to increase it by that much per pupil. And if it decreased, you didn't have to, but you could, if you needed to, decrease it. Is there a drive, is it something, is it, it's, with this curve one in place now, it's gotten kind of confusing to me.
Yeah, it is, it is a bit confusing to us as well. But it is driven by student enrollment. Student enrollment still plays a hand in this. And it is also driven by local share and also maintenance of effort. So, whatever is the greater of the two is what counties have to pay with regard to, because what happens is, it still, still happens like last year, even though we had a maintenance of effort or required by each of the counties to support the school system, there were many counties that went way above maintenance of effort in support of their school system. And so, that drives the local share and the maintenance of effort. So, it's kind of a combination of the two. We're expecting to hear what that, an official amount, we hope to hear by the end of this month. But in our case, for Kent County, it is the local share or the maintenance of effort. And in our case, it's the local share that is more. So, that's what drives the amount that Kent County would be responsible for. And how they're calculating the blueprint dollars and how it generates the funding, we're still trying to figure that out ourselves. Because we questioned why there was a reduction in our state revenue. And there were other counties, I mean, initially, when they released the amount of money, there were some counties that were going to see a significant amount, an increase in state. And then when they readjusted, and I guess they forgot to add in some tax, some tax dollars in one county in particular, it affected everybody else. It didn't affect us. It didn't change our amounts. But for instance, Dorchester saw about a $2 million decrease from what they were going to get from the state. So, I, the answer to that is, I, we're still trying to learn it ourselves. But it used to be pretty easy to figure out. But one of the good news, one of the pieces of good news is MSD has indicated to us that by July, the end of July, we should have 25 numbers. That's how early they're going to give us the numbers. Because we've already taken our enrollment for September 30, which drives next year, which would drive the following, the subsequent year funding. They're supposed to come up with what those amounts are going to be locally and statewide, so you can have a longer period of time to plan moving forward. So, soon as we get those numbers, I'll certainly share them. But I think that is a matter of what we're trying to do, is it's really hard for us to plan. Like even this presentation to the county commissioners, our budget is due into MSD by June 30. So, you know, if we have to do some more cutting or reducing of our budget, we don't have a lot of time to make those decisions with the presentation in May and not knowing numbers until May. So, you know, most, most school systems ask our counties if we can have an idea of what that allocation is going to be to us, we can start planning and making, you know, if we have to go back and renegotiate with our unions, and that's what we have to do. But we have to have that number in our hands as soon as possible.
So, this number, this 1,661, that's the minimum that you think you need?
That is the-
But is that, is that, and don't read anything into this, but, I mean, is that what by law we have to give you?
No. It is by law, you have to give me the amount, give us, the school system, the amount that we need to provide the 10% to our teachers. But if, but everything that we're asking for is salary-driven. So, we took the steps to reduce our budget so that everything we're coming forward to you from the school system is saying, this is what we need to provide salary increases to our employees.
And that number is in this million six?
It's the million five. The million five is the placeholder.
Okay.
So, does it not include MOE?
So, I was going to say, that's on top of maintenance of effort.
Yeah, that's right.
So, it's, that 1.6 is on top of the 719. So, their total ask would be those two numbers together, which is-
Yeah.
About 2.3?
Right. Well, it's not really our total ask, but you're right, because you're required for the 719, but our total ask above that is the 1.6.
So, that's the portion that is by law we would have to pay is the 700 and so on?
Yes, right. And so, without the additional revenue that we have in place, we can't provide salary increases for our employees. I mean, that's what's driving the 1.5, is the 1.5 is what we need in order to provide all of our employees a salary increase.
Has anybody addressed, I think there were funding formulas put in place to, so that these targets were supposed to be met? Is anybody addressing that funding formulas aren't meeting the school's needs?
I think everybody's asking that question. I mean, I have, I have, no, no, we're not getting answers. But I will tell you, I'm trying to work another avenue in contacting the governor's office. And I do have a meeting with the governor's office and Secretary Grady, who is the secretary for Department of Budget and Management. I have a Zoom call with the governor's office and Secretary Grady tomorrow. Because one of the things that, what I'm trying to state is that we get hit hard as a school system, because we're kind of in the middle. We, we don't have a way of raising revenue. We depend upon local and we depend upon state. But I found a document, because I'm familiar, having come as a superintendent from another state, that when you have a smaller school system, you don't generate enough funding to meet the minimum needs that you have as a school system. So, I found a document in which there are 37 states that provide additional funding to their small school systems. And there's a variety of ways in which they meet that. And so, what I'm trying to do is say that, you know, there's a couple of things here. Either a small school, a small county, a small school system matters, or it doesn't. And if the answer is it doesn't matter, then I think we have to be looking at big picture about where we go moving forward. But if it matters to our community, and it matters to us being able to maintain our schools, because we're about as small as we can be right now. I mean, I guess we could get smaller, but we've got a, we've got an elementary school in every corner of the county. We've got one central, which is Garnett. We have Rock Hall, and we have Galena. Those are really at the far ends. We have one middle school, and we have one high school. And what the governor's office is saying to me is really, you're about as small as you can be. So, we have to maintain the buildings. We have to maintain the staff that we need to run the buildings. So, it really doesn't matter if you have 500 kids or 150 kids. You still got to pay the lights in that school. You still got to pay for the custodians to clean the school. You still need a principal at that school. So, there are some aspects of having a small school that work to your benefit, but they don't. You still have to pay for the bus to transport students, whether you have 80 on a bus or whether you have 20 on a bus. So, we try to consolidate as best we can, but we're traveling, we're putting a lot of distance on our buses. And so, it may, you know, we have to maintain the buses, whether they're full to the rim or they're not. So, what I'm trying to advocate for from the governor's perspective is, can there be another additional allocation for us being a small school system? And getting that avenue so that there is not as much pressure for the locals to provide the additional monies that we need, you know, to do the things that we have to. So, that's kind of, that's kind of where we're at. I'll let you know how that conversation goes, but that happens 10 o'clock tomorrow is when I have my meeting with them. And hopefully, I can get some answers. I mean, they seem very sympathetic to the cause. And I just keep beating the drum and try to get people to notice, because it is very, in the best of circumstances, we're, we struggle. But with, when you add the additional requirements that we have for salary increases and for meeting the blueprint, it has really affected us greatly with what we're able to do based on the revenues that we see state and locally.
It started out with us, Kent County complaining about what we saw in the future. But it seems to be growing steam around the state where you're hearing a lot of other-
Yes.
-people with some concerns. And I just think they got a tiger by the tail, and it's, I don't think anybody completely understands what's going to come out of it. So, and then that wealth formula, it's not so much curve one that kills us, it's the way the wealth formula works out. And that, that's really, that's really the part of it that I have a real concern and questions with. In fact, to the point where, you know, we can give a lot, a ton of examples, I think, of how things were not exactly fair to Kent County. But that wealth formula is the real kicker. And I don't completely understand, and I'm not sure everybody does, but we're going to, we're going to understand it, because we're going to, we're going to have to dive into that thing and try to see how it makes sense and how it doesn't. And what part of it really kills us, I guess, is the, from what little I've seen, is the small population, when you divide that into the wealth of this county.
And the agriculture, the land.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're exactly right. So, it's, it's, it's a work in progress, I guess, but it's going to be a challenge.
I will say, I will say that just, just talking to my colleagues around the state, there are very few school systems that have been able to meet the requirements of the blueprint and the salary increases that are required based on the funding that they receive state and local. I know our neighbors had to request almost just short of $5 million over their allocation just because they didn't have enough to meet their salary placeholder that they needed to meet the requirements of the blueprint. So, it's, it's very concerning to us, and we understand that it's, it's a hard pill for all of us to swallow. That's why we tried to take steps before we even came and asked for what we needed. We tried to reduce our budget to what made sense without really hurting what we have to offer for our students. So, that's where we took steps to reduce our budget by 1.6 million, just moving forward to see, okay, what is it that we absolutely need? And, you know, what does that placeholder look like for salary increases for our employees? And what is that amount? So, that is the amount that we would need.
We were in a multi-jurisdiction meeting last week, and there was a very lengthy conversation about whether school system increases, salary increases should be step or COLA.
Right.
This year in particular, because of Kerwin. Because a step will further exacerbate the issue as we go forward, but a COLA will not. Do you have any insight to that conversation?
There are very few counties that only gave a COLA increase. And almost every county, you look at it this way, if you give a step and you're already lagging in meeting that 60%, it's not going to take away from that. It won't take away from getting you closer to the 60K, because it'll, it will absolutely get you there. And we still have a ways to go, you know, and what that amounts to. We kind of did, just put a raw number to it, and we would have to give another 5% increase to our teachers over the next three years to get there. But what, what's going to change it is the career ladder. And what does that look like? And all the technical assistance that's going to be involved in coming up with that career ladder? I don't know what that, what that's going to mean moving forward. But yeah, we have to begin the negotiations with our, with our teachers and putting together, we've actually signed an MOU with our teachers association, so that we can work hand in hand and collaborate to come up with a career ladder that makes sense. Because there'll have to be different levels. And will there be steps in the future with regard to the career ladder? I don't think so. I think it's going to look different. And that's, that's the part that has everybody kind of up in arms, like what does that, what's that going to look like moving forward? I don't have an answer for that.
One of the things that jumped, jumped out at me about this wealth formula is, was that, you know, we have to hire this implementation coordinator.
Yeah.
And we were going to get $150,000 each county to do this stuff, to hire this individual. And then, I guess, when it, when it was amended, it talked about the wealth formula, so-
It was going to be a bigger hit, yeah.
Instead of getting $150,000, that, when that wealth formula kicks in, Kent County gets 25.
Right.
And then we have to come up with the other 125, because this wealth formula doesn't.
Right. Well, they finally amended it, and so now it's all, the state is on the hook, but it's only on the hook for FY '24. And so now it's all, the state is on the hook, but it's only on the hook for FY twenty-four. So it's eighty-three thousand dollar extra allocation. So we'll see our state increase go up by eighty-three thousand. But it's only to hire the, the blueprint implementation coordinator.
And, and we're gonna have to have that individual for the entire, for, forever?
Yeah, it's, it's in law. It's in law. But it's, it's allocated by the state. The state will pay for it in FY twenty-four. What it's like moving forward in FY twenty-five, that's yet, that's yet to be seen.
I got you.
Yeah.
So I have some questions.
Okay, go ahead. Shoot, shoot away.
Being a newbie.
Okay.
I think I'm speaking primarily for myself at this point. But I, I, I have questions about certain things and the way certain things work. One is the grants that the school system accepts. And I'm assuming that some of these grants are probably fully funded a hundred percent. Some are probably matching funds.
Very few that we've received are, well, I, let me take that back. Special education is one of those where we have maintenance of effort. We're required to put in an equal amount of what we get from the state. So that is matching funds. The Maryland leads, we did have to demonstrate what we're doing locally to meet our share of the Maryland leads. But next year is the last year that we get money for Maryland leads. So if we're gonna have to make some reductions in that particular grant, we'll, we'll do it this coming year. A lot of the other grants, it's specifically for the, like, we have a kindergarten, what is it? R four K, ready for, for kindergarten, R four K, R, R four K is what we, we shortened the, the grant. That is just to provide some additional support so that we can get our schools to receive the excels for credit rate, or credit accreditation rating that they need to have in order to be fully funded by the state. So there are a lot of the grants that we get that, you know, if we don't have the funding to move forward, then the, the personnel or the people or whatever it is we're doing for that short period of time goes away.
And I think that's, in this day and time, I think that's probably something that needs some review from time to time. Because I, I know when I'm sitting here and the department head comes in with a grant, I want to know if there's a matching funding number with it.
Right. Well.
And if it's gonna be reoccurring or not.
Right. And for the most part, like I said, we, we, the only two grants that I can tell you that are, have the requirements from, for meeting and matching funds is special ed. And that's a requirement statewide. Every school system has to match what you get from the state. And now there'll, there'll be some responsibility for getting some of our special ed money locally. But all of that is a requirement for receiving the special education dollars. The Maryland leads, yes, there was some requirement for our matching, which we were able to demonstrate. We're already providing this, so that counts as our matching. But all the other grants, there are no requirements for matching. But if we can't, obviously if we can't sustain it, then, you know, the grant goes away. But we've been pretty creative in terms of being able to find other grants that could take their place. So there are no requirements in any other, other grants that we have for moving forward and matching.
So I want to also say that, and I, I thank you for that explanation. I also want to make it very, very clear that no way am I not supportive of our public school system. But I do have some tough questions that I need to ask.
That's fine.
And it's, it's not a reflection that I'm leaning one way or the other as a commissioner. You know, I, I want to support our teachers wholeheartedly. They deserve decent salaries and our children deserve a, a good education. But when I look at the financial statements from, from the Board of Ed, you're currently, according to what I've seen, you're currently carrying a fund balance of unassigned money of two million, a hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
About two point one, yes.
And change. Do you have any plans to spend that down?
Oh, well, in reality, we know we're not going to get a million six from the county. We know that. So we know that we're going to have to use some of our fund balance, which we have been doing over the years. I mean, last year, in order for us to meet what we needed to meet for our teachers, the requirement, that placeholder was about a million six of what we needed for our, to give our employees raises and to do what we had to do with our teacher, mandated teacher salaries. We did not come and ask the county for any additional dollars and we spent down our fund balance. So we put in about one point eight million dollar into current year. The problem with using your fund balance to, to, and you know this, by supporting recurring is it catches up to you at some point. I mean, yeah, we could have said, don't ask the county for anything. Go ahead and use our fund balance, which is two point one. And then in FY twenty-five, we'd have to reduce our budget by four million dollars, which is, it's unrealistic. You're, you'll be upside down underwater.
We're probably gonna be upside down.
Yeah, right. But, you know, right, right. But my, the point is, is well, that's why we took steps to reduce what we had put in for our fund balance in this current year, just so we could be fiscally responsible moving forward to see what is the actual amount that we need in order to provide our employees with salary increases. So that is what is left. We've reduced everything else and said, this is what we can, we can live with. This is what we can do to support what we have. But in order to give the salary increase, that's where we needed the one point five million dollar placeholder. And the, and we cut down the requests from our schools and our departments to a hundred and twelve thousand.
Do you remember what the unbalanced, unassigned fund balance was from the previous year? You know, it was how much of that, one point eight or one point?
It was all of it. It's one point eight. So essentially.
The, the previous year. So what was the unassigned fund balance, not on the financial statements ending last summer, but the one, how much of that?
It was one point, it was one point eight. The one that Commissioner Price is talking about is the two point one that we got from when we went through our financial statements for fiscal year twenty-two. Fiscal year twenty-one was one point eight, about one point eight million dollars for that in which we are currently using now for our fiscal year twenty-three budget.
Right.
But that would indicate that you had leftover from that year that added to the fund balance. And I don't know that you.
Which is fiscal year twenty? That I don't know off the top of my head.
Yeah.
That was one point eight.
We didn't bring, we didn't bring the financial statements with us, so I don't, I don't want to guess and give you the wrong number. But we could certainly get that to you. Yeah.
And, and that's.
So it was an increase from one point eight to two point one, which is that three hundred thousand dollar increase. But the one point eight that we settled at our fiscal year twenty-one statements, that's the number that's being, that's the fund balance that we're using currently now to fund fiscal year twenty-three. So the two point one million that Commissioner Price is explaining, that was settled at fiscal year twenty-two financial statements, which we have not included in our fiscal year twenty-four. Because we know since we're essentially gonna, we're using essentially possibly all of that one point eight million that savings that we had due to COVID, that would definitely put us in a severe financial bind.
Right. And, and just, just to kind of note is, the reason why we've been able to accrue, just as the county has with, with, through COVID, is because there are positions that we haven't been able to fill. We've got, you know, we have to allocate for substitute teachers. We've not been able to find substitute teachers. So, you know, so that accumulates. But at some point, you know, we've been able to hire more substitute teachers this year. Last year, I think all of our staff pretty much had to fill in those positions. So we had open positions a couple of years ago. We filled those positions. We were one of the luckier school systems is we had every single one of our teaching positions filled. Until we got a resignation like in October and then we were down again. But, but we've been pretty lucky in terms of filling our positions. So, you know, it's, it's just like anything else. Yeah, you can generate that additional fund balance, but you still got to have it in your budget at some point because you're gonna go back to where you need the, the position or you need to hire substitute teachers and you need to have the funding to hire them.
We're talking about two point one and is that, isn't, there's another five hundred thousand? We've kind of agreed that, that you're gonna not touch that unless you have to. So it's really like two point six, but we're.
Correct. That is correct. Right.
Talking now about the two excess.
Right.
I guess I come from a different walk of life. Because when I was in my former position, when I was presented with a, with a budget, the commissioners and, I mean, it was my, it was my budget to determine how it was administered and spent. And at the end of that budget cycle, whatever, and I always did, Pat, always turn money back. At the end of that, that budget cycle, that budget year, whatever wasn't touched came back into the general fund. And I just, and maybe this is, and I don't want you to be offended by this question, but I just need to know from my personal knowledge, why should the school board retain taxpayer dollars and unassigned money or a rainy day fund? Because if you have an emergency or you guys need some capital thing done, when, what we, we did, where I came from is we brought it before the commissioners and they, they decided whether to fund it or not fund it. But, I mean, I mean with contingency. I just, and maybe it's the cop in me, and I'm not suggesting anybody's doing anything wrong. But that's an awful lot of money to be holding on to.
Right.
Of taxpayer dollars.
Right. What I would say is we absolutely, with, with us being creative in terms of getting the grants to support our schools, we have to have, because we have to front the money and then we get reimbursed. And so there, there has to be some, I mean, if we don't have any amount to float the money that we receive through the grants, then we're going to be in trouble. So we have to have, for instance, like Title I, we didn't get our Title I money until November. So we have to float from September through November until we get reimbursed from MSDE for Title I money. So that's just an example.
But the only thing I could suggest, and we have worked before, like if it's a cash flow problem, we can adjust the money that we're giving to the schools so that if you need more money upfront, like if it's not a total number issue, but just a timing of when the money comes to you so you have cash flow, we could, we could work with you on that so that, you know, wouldn't.
Right.
And I, and I, just to build on, I, what Commissioner Price is talking about, a couple of million dollars is, in, in a big county, not a big deal, but it's a lot of money to a little county like Kent County. I think one way or the other, we'll have to get that down, whether it's you using it to, to finish out your budget or, or give it to us and we've got one time. I mean, we, we have a whole host of one-time requests that we could use one-time money for. Dump trucks, equipment, whatever. But, but we'll figure it out when we get to, when we get to the end. But I, I think it's safe to say that we'll have to spend that down.
And, and we understand that. And we have, we have.
And I'm not insinuating that you didn't.
And we have used our fund balance just about every year since I've been here to help supplement our budget.
Absolutely.
So we, we've done that. And we've tried to be physically responsible. Like last year, we didn't ask for an increase in MOE because we knew we had a substantial fund balance. And we used all of that, at least a great portion of that one point eight million to provide our employees with salary increases. But the problem with that is you use one-time money to support recurring budget. And, and it's going, and it's.
As well as you have to understand that.
Right.
Because if we, you know, if we were to.
Right.
If we were to use it, we, we know we got to replace it. That's not a mystery.
Right.
We know we got.
Right.
We got to take care of that, so.
Any other hard questions you want to ask me? I see a list there.
I think you're off the hook.
Oh, no, come on. I was ready.
No, I, I would like to say that, you know, you and I and President Getz had an opportunity to sit down privately and, and, and talk. And I certainly do appreciate that. And we talked about different things. And I asked you specifically that, you know, trim what you can trim without jeopardizing a child's education. And it's evident to me that you did try to do that.
Right. Thank you. I appreciate that. A million six out of our budget, just to trim, just before we even looked forward to what the forecast was, was a huge, it was a heavy lift for us. And, and I do not, I do not want that to go unnoticed that, and I'm glad you brought that up because we, we did try to be physically responsible in what can we do to live within our budget. We are going to increase class size a bit, not, not overly crazy, like thirty kids in a class. But in order to do what we had to do, I mean, that's eighty, eighty-eight percent of our budget is, is attributed to people. So if we're gonna reduce our budget, it's, it's got to come through people for the most part.
And also thank you for not getting your feathers ruffled.
No, I'm fine.
For lack of better words, when I asked about the fund balance because.
That's a fair question.
That's just a question I, I've had.
We've had those discussions here.
Yes, we have. We have.
So, you know, I just need to know that, that that money is being properly. And I have no reason to doubt that it's not.
Right. Right.
Dr. Katra, it's a little bit off the, little bit off of the topic. But when you talked about increasing your class sizes a little bit, not a lot, but a little bit, I would, I'm gonna applaud you for an email or a note that I saw sent, that was sent out to the parents about not wearing hoods up so nobody can identify. Leave your cell phones where they're supposed to be. Watch your language when you're addressing a teacher and things like that. That will go a long ways if we're, if we're forceful enough to really implement that and make it. I mean, I applaud you. Obviously, there's some talk about some, and it's not just us. It's all over, all over the country, I guess, is. But we, we see a lot of it home here with discipline issues that are, are, they're, they're, of nothing, none of your doing. So I mean, there's, that, we don't teach that in kids, but we have to deal with it. And it would make expanding classrooms, and that's maybe not where the direction we hope to go too far. But if, if you can, if we can create an environment that's conducive to learning and teaching, then the increasing in classrooms is not as big a deal as it was if you just got more people raised in hell, for better words.
Well, and, and what I would say is.
But that's, it's, I think a lot of people in Kent County are paying attention. And whether, all of it's true, whether it's not true, is a discipline problem. And we could dump a train load of money into the school system and it wouldn't correct that. It, we, we, you, the administrator, we got to correct it. And I think if we see that taking place, it makes it much, much easier to dish out a million six. If, that.
No, and I appreciate that. And, you know, we, we certainly are faced with challenges. It's difficult. It, I always say it's a three-pronged problem. It's, it comes from the families. You got to have support from your families. And that sometimes is really difficult for us. Well, we've got to figure out a way. That's where the community schools really help out in terms of having that liaison that can go out and do home visits or, or get out in, into, to the homes. It's having strong teachers and, and those supports and then the administration. So it's a, it's a three-pronged issue that we have to address and we try to, to do our best.
And I, I mean, you, the school system didn't create it. You just got to unfortunately deal with it. And we're in some certainly different times. I mean, I grew up, when I went to school in Rock Hall, that was a, that was a hardcore working community. Wood, woodmen, commercial fair. And, and we kind of grew up a little tougher maybe than the rest of the place. But when I went to school, I can assure you one thing. I didn't, I didn't call no teacher in their names. I don't know where my nose would probably be around here behind my head somewhere as if I had. But that makes a big difference. And you can't, and I feel sorry for teachers when they're in an environment like it because they did, that's not what they went to school to learn. They're not disciplinarians. They're teachers. And the atmosphere, if the atmosphere in that, in that room is, is conducive to learning, those kids will learn. And if it's not, they ain't going to. And I think, I think the thing that a lot of people think is, it's just extremely unfair to let a handful disrupt the majority. And hopefully it's a handful that we have to deal with. But I, I applaud that, that message you sent out, that things are gonna change. And I, I hope you stand behind that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looked like you had a question.
I wasn't a question, just some, some more, well, I got, I have a lot of questions.
Okay.
Being another newbie, trust me. And, but I just, I wanted to applaud you and the, the school board for, for trimming down because I could, I too had a meeting with you and Joe. And I left there with my head spinning and I've been thinking about it ever since then. And, and, and I don't want, I think I can speak for all three of us. As we bring up questions and.
As we bring up questions and, and ask you guys things, it's not to be adversarial at all. It isn't, but, I mean, it, you know, we have two, in my opinion, two things create a community. Schools, public schools and public safety. And, and the issues that we're talking about. Well.
I'm just kidding. I said in that order.
And the issues that we're talking about aren't exclusive to us. They are not. I mean, may, maybe there are some finite issues, but, you know, I just think that, you know, we can all work together and I think, you know, hopefully we can get through this budget, budget thing and, and nobody is, is scarred from it. So I guess just moving forward, hopefully, you know, it doesn't get adversarial or think that we're trying to, to do stuff that we really don't want to have to do. But, but we have a responsibility to, to manage, you know, the money of the citizens of Kent County. And I think we all take, well, we all take it very seriously.
And I, and I think for us, and I'll, I'll just leave you with this without, I wanted to make note, I have two of our board, two of the board members are here and I failed to introduce them. Mr. Getz and Sullivan. But, but what I do want to leave you with is, we try to be very responsible with our budget with regard to trimming everything that we could so we could leave the ask based on employee salary increases. Because I think all of us, you, you know, we all agree that because of the economy, for a lot of reasons, to, to say, sorry, this year you get nothing, is not a look any of us wanted to go about. Yes, we have mandates and requirements for our teachers, but our support staff and our administration also deserve salary increases too. And we wanted to make it easier in terms of showing you what that ask would be. And so the highest increase would be obviously for our teachers and that would be about 6.5. And we're looking at with our other employees, it would be anywhere between a five and a 6% increase. So, you know, we have not, we have not finished negotiations. And we're still, you know, unlike the county, we do have teachers unions and, and support unions that we have to deal with. But we're not asking for a ridiculous amount of salary increase for our employees. We're not saying we want to give everybody a 10% or a 12%. We're trying to, to do what is, what is right in terms of treating our, our employees to a salary increase that we feel they deserve as well.
Well, again, I just think, I think it, and going back to what Ronnie said about the discipline or the, the, some of the things that maybe we can do for accountability, I guess I should say, not necessarily disciplinary, but accountability in the schools. I think that it, it'll be a lot easier asking our citizens for, for an increase in salaries and or more, more money if, if they're, if they think they're getting a better bang or a, more of a bang for their buck, I shouldn't say a better bang. I hope I worded that correctly the right way, but.
Yeah, but I, like I said, I, I think our teachers feel like they're county employees as well.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
And they, they want to be treated fairly in terms of, of how, how everyone else is being treated, so.
No, no, absolutely. But, I mean, go, but there are also, you know, there are people in the private sector that aren't going to get a raise this year, didn't get a raise last year. And they're still having to, to deal with the inflationary issues. I mean, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm quite certain we could go out on this street and ask anybody, do you think you deserve more money? And everyone would say, everybody's going to say yes. But, you know, I'm not saying that they don't deserve it. I'm just saying that, you know, there are a lot of people I know that, that aren't getting raises this year and they still have to deal with this, so.
I appreciate everything that you all have done for us as a school system. And as always, I wish all of you well. And you're right in the midst of your budget process, so are we. And so all I ask is if we know a number sooner rather than later, if we have to do more cutting and, and doing that, which is, will, will be devastating to us, we have, we need to know sooner rather than later.
I can appreciate that.
I do.
Absolutely.
I pulled the other, the preceding year's documents. So year ending June 30, 2021, the fund balance estimates 1.8. The following year it was 2.1, that's the number you quoted. And in last year's budget, you had plugged the gap with 1.8.
Yep.
So I, I suppose one of the ways we budget here in the county is we project to see where we're going to end by the end of the year and we use that number for the following year's budget. Do you have a projection of where you're going to end the year as opposed to budget, actual versus budget?
That's the, that's the issue of why we're saying we don't want to use the 2.1 million. We are hoping that we'll save about $700,000, which what we pretty much cut off the top to bring us into the start of fiscal year '24. But that's still up in the air. Like, like I said, we're using that full 1.8 last year to help assist and kind of get us together for the blueprint. But that's why we have been conservative with that 2.1 million. Because honestly, if we end up with zero, now there's going to be a situation where we're really going to need help. We're not going to have funding to do anything.
And I would reiterate, that's where we got that initial $700,000 cut. We figured, okay, we're probably going to save, we hope we can save about $700,000 in this budget. And that's where the $700,000 is going forward. But just a caution, we, you know, we said, okay, we can cut $200,000 out of, out of special education in particular. And then the other 500 came from FICA and the benefits in that area. But the $200,000 is based on us knowing today that we don't have to pay for a non-public for a student. That could change because a student could move into Kent County. That requires some, the child be placed in non-public and that $200,000 is off the table. And where do we get the money? It's going to have to come from fund balance. So there are a lot of things that affect us. And we, we, unfortunately, we have probably seven high-needs students that have moved into the county that we know we're going to have to service next year. So we're probably going to have to open up another life skills program and we're trying to figure out where that's going to be housed. So that's additional compensation. Now, we'll get funded for that in '25, but we have to absorb the costs in '24. So there are a lot of things that we don't know about in planning our budget that happened to us and we have to have the ability to fund those, those needs and those requirements as they come up. So.
There's got to be a simpler way to fund education though.
You think? Yeah, it would be nice, wouldn't it?
That's like some of those mousetraps you see them build with the, it, it just, it's just very complicated. And I'm not sure any of us thoroughly underst, I know I for one, I'm struggling. And that, it's the move and target all the time when you, I mean, there, there's, I seen, you see articles where like, think Baltimore City thought they were going to have to come up with an extra 12 million. Now it's up to 79 million or something ridiculous like that. It's, I mean, how can you be that much off when you plan, when you pass a law?
Right, well, and that's.
But we got, it is what it is.
And that's what happens. I mean, there could be a, a number of kids that move into the Garnett School System, say there's 10 more and then we have to add another teacher. Well, that's not in our budget. So where do we get that money to have, to open up that classroom, to hire that teacher? It's going to have to come from our fund balance. So there.
I will say though, but when it comes to, I hope you can always regard the county as somewhat of your fund balance or safeguard too. I mean, we, you know, when departments get in trouble and they come and make a good argument about it, most few times have I ever seen them go out here empty-handed, so just.
I think I can speak for this board. This board is going to make sure that we fulfill our obligation to the best of our ability.
And we're trying to be fiscally responsible. And that's why we cut our budget before we even came in here. And certainly, once we hear what the number is, we're going to have to see what makes sense moving forward. Because what I don't want to do is to, you know, come up with a plan, just spend all of your fund balance and then we've got to come up with another million eight or whatever cut going into '25. Because I can tell you right now, it is tight in how we've got the number of teachers and the number of staff. So to say, oh, but, you know, you can cut your budget in '25, I, I think we're setting the school system up for failure. So we're going to have to look at it realistically in terms of what that number is. And if that means we have to go back and, and look at raising class size again, we may very well have to do that because I cannot see us moving forward and putting us in an irresponsible position to say, oh, we'll just kick the can down the road and you can figure it out later. I think that's a huge ask.
One, one thing I think we can all agree on is going forward, it's going to get worse.
It is going to get worse.
By far. I mean, a lot worse than, than it is now.
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Unless we have any more questions.
Thank you for that little burst of sunshine there, Mr. Getz.
Good luck with your meeting tomorrow.
Oh, thank you, I'll, I'll keep you posted.
Everyone, please do.
Thanks to the school board members for being here to support your session.
Dan, that goes for you too.
Oh, yeah.
Good to see you. All right. You want to tell us now where you've come up with all this extra money?
Here she is, the superhero.
I said, the printing press is broken.
When will we be talking about our, of new positions and personnel?
We're going to talk about that, I guess, see what you want to talk about next week, if that's the, the place you want to go. I guess we were going to look at allocations. I'm not sure how, how long we go this way.
Okay.
I need to stand on my way.
Yeah, hold on.
So we were going to try the allocation schedule today since we had.
I thought we were done.
I did too.
We haven't even begun our portion yet.
We can, if we want to, but yeah.
Can we just take a break?
Why don't we take a, yeah.